Good morning. Good morning. Good morning, please remain standing, I'll ask Father Bet to start our day in prayers. Father Bot.
Thank you, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. You have called us, O God, to be your people. You have loved us and chosen us for your own. Clothe us with your compassion, your kindness, your humility, your gentleness and patience. Help us to forgive one another as you have forgiven us, and bind us together in the perfect unity of your love, through Jesus Christ the Lord, who is alive in range with you and the Holy Spirit, one God to the end of the ages. Amen. O God, whose son Jesus Christ cared for the welfare of everyone and went about doing good, through your grace grant us the imagination and perseverance to create in this county a just society. Make us agents of your compassion to the suffering and deprived, the persecuted and oppressed, that we may bring them hope and comfort and courage. We ask this in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen. I want you to join with me in the Lord's prayer. Our Father, your art in heaven, hallowed be your name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, everybody, please take the seats. Members, I'm hoping not to have an afternoon session. But whatever happens, we will adjourn promptly at twelve forty-five today, so if we don't finish, there will be an afternoon session. Item one on the agenda, apologies.
Good morning Chairman, good morning Council, yes, we have apologies from Councillors Jay, Councillor Jones, Councillor Pritchard, Councillor Snape and Councillor Wilcox.
Thank you, are there any further apologies?
Chairman, I don't know if I caught it, but Councillor Worthington?
If we can add Councillor Worthington to the apologies, thank you. Thank you, Councillor White. Item two, declarations of interest, does any member wish to declare any interest? No, moving on to item three on the agenda, confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting, I move that the minutes of the council meeting held on October the tenth, twenty twenty-four be signed as a true record, is that agreed? Thank you. Thank you. This more pen are you open? Thank you. Item four, the chairman's correspondence. Storm Dora, I'm sure we all found last weekend somewhat challenging with the weather, so I think on behalf of all members, I'd like to take this opportunity to extend the council's gratitude to the always teams who have worked tirelessly over the last weekend to deal with the aftermath of Storm Dora, clearing many fallen trees and keeping Staffordshire moving and safe, and I genuinely mean that, it was a challenging weekend, and I think we thank our staff for the amount of work they did. The second item on the chairman's correspondence is former councillor David Brooks. It is my incredibly sad duty to inform the council of the death on the third of November twenty twenty-four of former county councillor David Brooks. Mr. Brooks represented the Utoxeter Town County Electoral Division between May two thousand and sixteen and May two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Brooks served on a number of councils committees, including the Corporate Review Committee, the Planning Committee and the Audit and Standards Committee. I will now open this up, if anybody wants to say a few words about former councillor David Brooks. Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those that knew him best aren't present this morning, presumably stuck in the traffic which will have affected quite a few people on the way. I knew David Brooks well, both as a colleague in twenty sixteen and then latterly as the leader of the council. David is one of those, was one of those people who was a stalwart for his political party. All political parties have those stalwarts who are willing to stand and fight for what they believe in over very, very many years. I recall first being introduced to him and being told how he'd been part of the Conservative team that had helped recreate the Conservative Group on East Staffordshire Borough Council. Hard work, diligence, leafleting, we all have people like that, don't we, in our political parties, and we rely on them to keep the work going in order to keep the flame, the flag flying. David had a robust personality. Anybody who encountered him and got the wrong side of him, you definitely knew about it, and he'd always jab you in the chest with a smile on his face, I couldn't quite believe it. He was a huge personality in Staffordshire's farming communities. He was, morning Philip, he was a key player in the National Farmers' Union and also a prime mover in an organisation called SOS Dairy, somebody who was fighting hard to make sure the dairy industry wasn't sacrificed at the altar of the big supermarkets. But you knew where you stood with David. Some might describe him as a bit of a Marmite character, you either liked him or you really didn't. But the one thing I could always guarantee as leader of the council is that when I turned up at the county show each year, I would always find David in the same place, the bar, where we would have a bit of banter, he'd jab me in the few, in the chest a few times, and then we'd have a drink. He'll be sadly missed by his wife Brenda and his children, he was taken too soon and very, very rapidly. Mister Chairman, to the memory of David Brooks.
Thank you, Councillor White. Councillor Atkins, I'm aware that you've just arrived, hobbled in after your operation, we are talking about the late councillor or the late Mister David Brooks. I'm going to give the opportunity without putting you on the spot too much, would you like to say anything? Thank you, please stay seated, Councillor Atkins, we don't.
I would have been, I would have been here a bit sooner, but one of the buses broke down at the bus stop and the queue was back to the showground again, as you know, used to be one of my many phone calls in. Yeah, well, exactly a week ago, we were gathering for David's funeral, and as James Leavesley said to me, the average for a funeral is about fifty. And for those of you that know St Mary's in Utoxeter, the aisles were full, the side cloisters were full, the galleries on both sides upstairs were full, and they were standing underneath the bell tower. There were over six hundred at the funeral. Some of us in this room would be looking if we got fifty, which just shows the breadth and depth of respect that people felt for David. If I may, I'll just read what I put out earlier on because I find it quite emotive, emotional talking about David, I had my ups and downs with him, like the leader just said. Besides being a fellow Utoxeter and Staffordshire farmer, David was a good friend of mine for many years. So many things were going well for him and Brenda lately in family life with their youngest daughter Vicky marrying Sam in September, and his great recent joy has been Brenda and his first grandchild George. It's the first time I've seen David silenced when he was babysitting, and George was asleep and he didn't want to wake him. We all have many memories of David, from shearing through to dairy campaigns to our great rural social life, which we all can still enjoy. Rural friendship and camaraderie goes deep and is still there, and with our recent changes and challenges, we are as farmers, all coming together again as one, which is something David would have been heavily involved. Besides his active work in the NFU and Staffordshire Agricultural Society, David became involved in local politics over thirty years ago, campaigning and successfully stopping a massive landfill near his farm. For those of you don't know, Lee Environmental put a bid in to run the incinerator at Stoke, and when it was shut down for six weeks a year for maintenance, they were going to tip a million tonnes of landfill at Bramshaw. Despite David never standing in the ward he lived in, he always worked hard to represent the area he was elected for and go that extra mile. David, as we often saw in here, in this chamber, would often stand up and robustly both challenge or defend a position. I know NFU colleagues also witnessed this at first hand, as I did as a fellow borough and county councillor. This is something you only see in someone with convictions. If David believed something to be wrong, or a point of view needed challenging, then he would say so. This may make some of his fellows feel uncomfortable at times, but they would understand that with robust challenge, we can see other points of view and result design better solutions to deliver better outcomes for farming, for the council and for our residents. David will be a big loss to our rural communities, and was a larger-than-life character, involved in so many kinds of community, from farming and dairying, sheep shearing, to local politics at every level and area. As a mutual friend has said to me, David was a brilliant social secretary, making sure things happened and were fun. I spent the Friday, Chairman, before his passing, with David and Brenda at Utoxeter races. He had a good winner on the last race, five pounds on the nose at twenty to one, with friends, and then afterwards to a local hostelry, the Butchers Arms at Bramshaw. David was as ever good company in his usual boisterous self, and I will carry that as a memory, even rang me up the next evening, even if asked how I'd gone after the meeting that day for my approval and selection. David not being with us will be a great loss at so many levels, and as the leader's just said, our thoughts should be with Brenda, and their children Will, Georgina, Charlotte and Vicky, and David's beloved grandson George. At least David had time to see the next generation of the Brooks Farm, I'm sorry, at least David had time to see the next generation of the Brooks farming family. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Atkins, I'm aware how close you was, how close you were. Councillor John Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. Like Philip, I'm devastated about the loss of David, he died too young, mid-sixties, it was ridiculous, and a few weeks before he invited me to a ploughing match on his farm, which I attended. He was brilliant, David was a brilliant person, he didn't take prisoners, he didn't take fools lightly, in fact, he'd tell them what he thought of them, that was David, all over, and I won't reiterate what Philip's just said, because he's better than what I can say. Alls I can say is it's a very, very sad loss to this county, and a very sad loss to the agricultural community, and particularly from the dairy farms, I mean, he got a fantastic dairy herd, excuse me, and he was a part of the Ola group, and I'm sure they feel devastated in the loss of David as I do. Him and I used to have a lot of banter together, we had some good laughs together, and he liked beer like I like beer, and particularly Philip knows which hostelry they went to, and it was, we used to have a brilliant time, but I used to have with Brian Jones on Facebook, we used to have some banter together, and David will be a big loss, it was a loss to this county when he lost his seat, and it'll be a big loss to the community as a whole. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Mark Whinneyton.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, a very sad day for all the council, but obviously for the farming community in particular. David, whatever you could say about him, was a man of the people, whatever the forum he was in, as has been said before, he was there and he was fighting someone's back, occasionally fighting his own back as well, but that was just David. He was a farmer, a family man, and I think it's just been said, he was a friend. Just as an aside, I used to go to, or I'll probably still continue going, to the occasional hostelry on a motorbike, and you'd see David there on his motorbike. Now, the difference between me and David was that I'd got a Harley which was slow and noisy, and David's bike was a sort of death on wheels, really, it was a Suzuki four thousand and fifty horsepower or something, but that was just David, he had to do everything at a hundred miles an hour. I do feel that David would have enjoyed the present problems that are going through farming, he loved to take on a challenge, and goodness, hasn't farming got a challenge at the moment. We've got the problems with inheritance tax, with a government doesn't understand what's going on, and then in terms of Ola, they've got problems because they're trying to do the right thing with additives to cut down methane, and that's been rejected by the people. David would have loved fighting the case, and I'm sure he's up there canvassing someone, knowing David, it's probably got himself, but I'll miss him and I'm sure a lot of other people will as well, God bless.
Councillor Mark Deville.
Everyone, morning Chairman, difficult to follow Mister Atkins' words and Mister Whinneyton's words, so I'll be extremely brief, Chairman, and you're right, Philip, exactly a week ago, I was also at St Mary's Church, and I've never, I don't think, ever seen as many people in St Mary's Church, and I do believe there were between six hundred and fifty and seven hundred people. It was a great shock to us all, it was a tremendous shock, I was only speaking to David at ten o'clock the night before his passing. Mister Whinneyton said he was a larger-than-life character, he was a man who said what he meant and meant what he said, and he'll be very, very sadly missed. Of course, his greatest love undoubtedly was to his wonderful family. He also loved his farm, he loved his local area, and he loved his draft bass. He was a proper character, he'll be sadly missed, and I'm sure colleagues, you'll all join me and Mister Atkins and other members in wishing every, every best wish to Brenda and the family. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, members, for those very moving tributes to David. Can I ask all members, including members of the public, to please stand for a minute silence? Thank you, please take your seats. Moving on, members, to item five on today's agenda, which is a statement to the leader of the council. Councillor Alan White, will you move consideration for the statement, please?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, I move consideration of the leader's statement.
Item one of the leader's statements is Staffordshire Means Back to Business. Councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I commend the leader's statement and our need to get Staffordshire working and the problems that we face? And I look back to where we were twelve months ago, and the problems that we faced then, and the problems that we face today with this present government, and I find every access and every way that we look, we find the government working against us, and I really think that that is absolutely appalling. I look, Chairman, at the problems that we have, as already been mentioned with farming, I look at the problems that we have where in my division, and I suspect in most others, that we have over thirty percent sixty-five-year-olds and over, who will be looking at the problems of how they're going to heat their homes this winter, but I particularly look, Chairman, at how we're going to see a growth in our economy in Staffordshire, particularly, I look in my division, where I saw twelve months ago, a massive growth in the number of high-quality, high-paid jobs, and I can't see the same clear way now that we had twelve months ago. So, Chairman, I commend the work that we're doing, I think the battle that we have to fight is so much harder than the one that we were fighting twelve months ago. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Joliet Atkins.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to ask a bit about women in business, first of all, what sort of percentage of Staffordshire startups are in fact initiated by women, and what are the barriers which women in particular face, particularly women from ethnic minorities? And what will phase, what will phase two of the Women in Business project offer women business leaders? Thank you.
Councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman, good morning, everybody. So, I'll I'll answer the question first, and then I'll talk about the purpose of the update that I gave to Cabinet at our last meeting, so the answer to the question is, I will need to write to you, because I can't pull those figures to my mind immediately, but we do have those. The overall purpose of the statement, in the context of what, as Councillor Smith ably illustrated, is a difficult time for businesses at the moment because of some of the decisions that are being made by government nationally regarding particularly national insurance, particularly targeting of rural businesses, farms, and also particularly the new Employment Rights Bill, all of which I think are particularly challenging for small and medium-sized businesses, and particularly for those that want to employ more people. The tax on employment is a particularly difficult thing here, and generally that difficult business environment that's being created, I just thought it was timely to remind colleagues and all of those who are listening of the excellent work that this council has done over many years to support more small and medium-sized businesses. I'm not going to go through the entire list that's in the paper here, but as you can see, we have for many years offered an extensive suite of support, both from pre-startups, so from when people are considering whether they want to start up a business at all, and then advice through the stages of the life of that business as they get started, and then they start to grow and hopefully hire people and create more good jobs, and this council has a fantastic record in that respect. And I want to reassure colleagues that whatever the national government chooses to do, that commitment to our businesses here in Staffordshire, to people from all backgrounds who want to start and grow businesses, employ people, make their way in life, that that continues, and it is a huge priority for this council, and long may that continue. The final thing that I'll say is a very happy Christmas to all of those business owners, and of course, all the people who work in those businesses as well. For many of them, Christmas Day may be a slight pause, but for many of them, it won't be, we have a lot of people who work very hard for hundred and sixty-five days a year in this county, and I think it's important we pay tribute to them all as we head into the festive season. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor White. Moving on to item two on the lady's statements, which is Climate Change and Planning Charter. Councillor Nigel Gates.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and firstly, if you'd just indulge me for a second, I'd just like to thank everybody for the kind messages, the support, the flowers from the Conservative Group, and the loan of Councillor Wilson's tweezers when I had a particular issue, which have kept me going. I must admit, for those who don't know, I did have a bit of an accident, but I'm managing to overcome it, and every day I'm doing a little bit better, I've just pressed the light with my index finger, so I'm in a little bit of pain at the moment, but it's small steps forward, to be perfectly honest. Coming on to the item on the agenda, the Climate Change and Planning Charter, I was reviewing in the light of the recent storms, and certainly one over the weekend, the Sustainable Drainage Charter, which handbook which the county council produced in two thousand and seventeen, and I do really think it is time, it's getting on, by the time it's reviewed and looked at and perhaps reissued, it'll be ten years, I do think it's time that that is reopened, if it hasn't already been reopened, I think there's some aspects of that to do with thresholds and distance for drains and absorption, which we really want looking at, and the other aspect, it mentions sustainable and active transport and travel in there, I think there is an opportunity to look at the old mineral lines, which are predominantly flat and link communities and tend to go across divisional and ward boundaries, and I think there is an opportunity of actually visiting those which have been done in different parts of the country, we've got some very redundant tunnels, I'm thinking, down the old Hare Castle rail tunnel, you know, ambitious project, but potentially we could have a real fantastic network of active travel and cycle routes which support the, you know, the move over to electric bikes and allow people to actually commute off the roads safely between our employment sites and between our communities. One thing about the old mineral lines is that a lot of those sites of mineral extraction and mining are now the employment sites, and they do link to where people live and where people work, and it gives us an opportunity of looking at things in a more wider context. Thank you.
Councillor Yates, can I just say that it's good to see you back, genuinely so, after what must have been a fairly difficult time, but it's good to see you back. Councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman, could I just, commending the report that we have in front of us, of us particularly point out the role of every single member within this council of how we are all working on our own patches to introduce climate change solutions or perhaps in such a small way but all the little things that we do, community, all come together to make something of a difference. I'm very impressed with the fact that I've got a village hall that's put an application into the Climate Change Fund, I'm looking at so much that we're doing locally, a great deal of work that we're doing as far as trees are concerned, hedges and ditches, all of these local things need to be recognised and drawn into the overall impact that this council has on trying to take positive action as far as climate change is concerned. Thank you Chairman.
Councillor Mark Deville.
Thank you Chairman and yeah, good to see you councillor Yates and I'm really pleased to see that you are making good progress, it's great to see you. Just on your point on the dreadful storms that we experienced last weekend, I share your thoughts Chairman and also offer thanks to the tremendous teams that were out in the most awful of weather last Friday, particularly Friday, on Friday the worst of the weather seemed to be in the Newcastle, Kids Grove, Madley area, I think they copped it very, very badly on Friday and then on Saturday we had most reports and the worst of the weather seemed to be in the Stone area, Stone and Eccleshill area but it was right across the county, problems were right across the county, you know, from flooding up in Rudyard in the north to a fairly serious incident with a big tree felled down in Codswell. The highways crews Chairman reacted to almost 500 different incidents over the weekend so I'm sure all councillors this morning and yourself Chairman will join me in sincerely thanking our highways officers for the fantastic work that they did last weekend. Councillor Yates, you're right and I think you'll know that I am a real advocate for active travel networks and I think that there's a really good example of a disused railway that's been put to best use in your division. We also have one in my division that connects the old Creswell station to Chedle station and it's a disused railway path that's very, very well used. So absolutely we're all over active travel and I think we can work in partnerships with the district councils and with parish councils and with local volunteer groups to make these disused railway paths and other paths of real value to the local community because they're well used. And of course getting out on paths such as these, I've also walked a path near to your house in Silverdale councillor Huckfield and I know that that path is really, really well used. And you know getting out and walking from A to B on these types of path, it's great not only for your physical health but great for your mental health as well, isn't it? So your points are well taken, well received and we're absolutely all over this, it's got to be good for us all, hasn't it? Thank you Chairman.
Councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you Chairman, just reading through the paragraph, I think two or three things spring to mind, one is planning. The government want to build, what is it, one and a half million houses is it for the next five years? So never mind the planning restraints and where the builders are going to come from, whenever you build a house that water is stopped going into the ground and then goes into a drain, into a brook, into a river and causes somebody else a problem. So when planning is happening in new houses, stopping that water going straight down the drain is the biggest thing. You know, most of you know our farm at Roaster and I've got the River Dove and the River Churnet. The River Dove comes from Ashbourne, gets affected by the Henmore Brook in Ashbourne and Dovetale and the Churnet comes from Leeke and I have to say the Churnet is shoving more water down it now than it ever has done, probably because of something that's gone on upstream. It could be the demolition of the wares which are designed to stop the water coming down. Dams are a major source of stopping water going down rivers and the Dove's got the Carstington reservoir at the other end and when they want to save Derby from flooding you can tell they're pumping water out of Derwent into the River Dove because that one comes out. The government have stopped, paused all the environmental schemes that farmers could go in so you can talk about planting hedges as much as you'd like, they've stopped all the grants to enable the farmers because they're going at cost, you know, there's no money in it, it's just the money to plant the hedge, they've stopped that. The only grants that are available for planting woods and forests. So with the land use framework coming along as well, it'll be interesting to see where all this goes. I've noticed that when, there's six solar farms being planned in Stafford Borough in East staffs around the Newton and Hickson area and one of the main concerns about that is they will flash the water down into the brook. There's no more water than there ever was before, it's exactly the same amount, it's just dropping in some places a little bit more than it normally does and in some places there isn't as much as there normally is, which is why your sultanas have doubled up in price. I never work out how the ingredients into something like a mince pie go up by pence but the mince pie has to go up by a pound a box, supermarkets. You know, so I think there's an awful lot more work to go on in this and while you're setting your high level strategies and everything else, you really do have to think about what's going around the corner and where these houses are going to be built. Because I know early on somebody mentioned the family farm tax, if farms are selling up 10, 20, 30, 40 acres to pay a bill that they can't afford, that's like saying you've got, we've all got to pay a tax on this, twenty percent, oh we might as well sell this bit off, haven't we? What are you going to do with it? Well I'll tell you what'll happen, Blackrock will buy it and they'll stick solar panels on it or a developer will buy it and stick houses on it. So there'll be no planning, there'll be no forethought so we need to get our strategic plan for the county in place and talk robustly with our neighbours and I'm sorry with the districts and boroughs about how things are going to plan out, otherwise we're not going to get the infrastructure, the drains, the sewers, the water, the flooding and everything else in the right place. This is above politics, this is something we must do for the people of Staffordshire.
Councillor Graham Hutton.
Thank you Chairman.
Members, sorry Graham, just give us a second, after we finish please give councillor Hutton the time to speak, we rather than burst into conversations.
I'd like to answer councillor Philip Atkins, he might well know that there are approximately seven, I read this only two weeks ago, 700,000 empty homes in this country which are all connected to the utilities. So the Irish Government, Republic of Irish Government have brought in a law where a property is classed as abandoned, it becomes the property of the state. So all these people fighting over their parents' wills or grandparents' wills who are letting properties be abandoned, we should be taking those and putting them back into good use because they're already connected to the utilities. We in this country could have 700,000 homes quite easily straight away.
So councillor Hutton, we are, as a group we wandered off the subject really.
Well it's about climate change.
Yes, I know councillor Hutton, but it's particularly about this, and I know don't argue with me councillor Hutton.
And I'm saying that we could get those back.
Can we please just stay on subject on this please, it's important and I know there's a wider subject of climate change, but it is a particular subject and I have allowed you to drift, I'll allow you to speak councillor Hutton, I'm not stopping you.
I just wanted to make that point, that there's 700,000 abandoned homes in this country.
And you've made the point. Councillor Alan White.
Thank you Mr Chairman, one has to wonder at Christmas time whether or not councillor Atkins got the word sultanas and mince pies in for a bet. Who ever thought that that would come up in a full council meeting? Anyway, first to councillor David Smith's point about the Climate Change Fund, isn't it a wonderful fund? It just goes to show how many brilliant ideas there are across the county of Staffordshire which just need a little bit of money to make them fly and you as local councillors are able to help with that and see those projects take off which contribute to the efforts that we're all trying to make towards climate change. I agree with councillor Yates about the active travel schemes, I think they're a really good idea but I don't just talk the talk, I also walk the walk or ride the bike. Years ago when I first left the army I used to cycle from my home in Elford into Birmingham University each day, it was 25 miles in and 25 miles back out, through the tunnels in Birmingham I might add. So it was active travel but it was also dangerous travel. I did come off a few times but fortunately as you can see survived almost in one piece, banged my head a few times but you can probably tell. I do think it's a really good thing to do though, I think that active travel, that getting out first thing in the morning, moving, perhaps riding your bikes, get to work, it really sets you upright for the day so long as it's not raining too much. You're right about the Climate Change Planning Charter, the Sustainable Drainage Charter, it does need updating but as you know and as all Members of this council know, there is a new set of rules coming out around planning. Others have already spoken to that and the costs that they will incur upon our local communities, the toll they will take upon infrastructure, is there sufficient power in place, are there any plans to support the power that is required for things like electric vehicles that will be expected to be driven from those homes? We wait to see answers. In this authority we put our money where our mouth is, we know that flooding is a problem across the county of Staffordshire, we have 10 flooding officers who I think are doing a tremendous job of dealing with the issues that many of you are facing in your constituencies. We also have four additional Members of Staff who can be brought to bear to solve problems in localities as and when they are needed. So I think we're doing a lot towards the climate change agenda in Staffordshire, not just because it's sort of the zeitgeist but it's also because we know that we have to think about how we deal with things like flooding, how we have to deal with runoff of water, how we have to deal with, as councillor Hutton put, the utilities and connecting these new homes to the power grid and you're right, if homes already exist we should make use of them, let's make sure that we're part of that solution. So Mr Chairman, I hope Members of council can endorse the Climate Change and Planning Charter, it's a good thing and I hope everybody gets behind it.
Thank you councillor White. Moving on to Item Three on today's Leader's Statement which is Family Support. Councillor Joliet Atkins.
Thank you Mr Chairman, the focus on early support for families is particularly welcome especially as we've seen an increase in the numbers of nought to four year olds within the county. I was surprised that looking at the bar chart within the Cabinet paper, that both finance and domestic abuse issues were relatively low on the issues raised by families and I don't know why that is because I would have thought that the cost of living crisis would have particularly impacted on those families. But I very much support the service and I'm sure that the work of our staff in helping those families has improved mental health among young people and hopefully improved school attendance too since the Covid pandemic. Thank you.
Councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you very much Chairman, good morning everyone, yes it's that time of year again and I just wanted to mention about Samaritans, you know, for all the good work they do for 365 days a year, 24 hours a day and I'm asking everyone in the chamber to speak to their residents and ask them to go to their library, get a poster, get a green light, put it in their window on the 21st of December and let's make Staffordshire looking green and supporting the Samaritans. And also to mention that Kiel University have taken this on board as well so it's going to be widespread throughout the country with the students there, you know, so please, please support the Samaritans, you know, for all the people going through crisis at Christmas and what have you, just needing a friendly voice and that to speak to. So please, please get your residents to go to the library, get a light and a poster and support the Samaritans and let's see Staffordshire looking green on the 21st of December. Thank you very much Chairman, happy Christmas everyone.
Thank you councillor Edgela and continue the great work you do on mental health and the mental health of children, so continue that. I have no further speakers so councillor Mark Sutton.
Thank you Mr Chairman, I certainly echo the thoughts of my colleague councillor Edgela around the good work the Samaritans do and can I thank councillor Atkins for her support for the Family Support Commission's service. Since 2018 the service has supported almost 8,000 families across the whole of the county so we absolutely want to continue what we do so because ensuring that every family has access to that early help and that early intervention to prevent escalation to higher level services is really important. The paper that went through Cabinet basically seeks to give permission for us to recommission this because the current service comes to an end next year, you know, and we look forward to going through the process though that we continue with an excellent service going forward. Thank you Mr Chairman.
Thank you, moving on to Item Four on the Leader's Statement which is the future commissioning of alternative provision for children and young people. Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, I just want to highlight the recent and very, very, very sad case of Sarah Sharif, the fact that you had a child who presented herself at school with obvious injuries and as a result of the preliminary investigations the parents decided to take that child out of school and homeschool with disastrous consequences. And I know with the pressure on finances, the difficult decisions it is to take children into care and whatever and provide, you know, support or alternative provisions and things, I just want to reiterate the importance of making sure that there is an absolute holistic approach that when there are difficult decisions to be made about schooling, whether it be provision of homeschooling, alternative schooling, where there was a break in potential continuity of the lead person who was responsible for that child, then we have absolute systems in place to ensure that tragedies like the one which I've mentioned really do not happen at all, never mind in Staffordshire. Thank you.
Councillor Jonathan Price.
Yeah, thank you very much Chairman and thank you for those comments, not directly related of course to the paper that we've got here but you're absolutely right to raise that, I was extremely horrified when I saw that myself on the news. Just to say a few words around our elective home education team, they are extremely good. We do have a register as well of those children we feel that may be potentially vulnerable from home, not only working through councillor Sutton's team but we also have educational welfare officers that will go out and our EHE team of course will go out to make sure that appropriate education is in place from that point of view. We're of course responsible for a range in education for those children who have been permanently excluded or because of illness or other reasons as well and wouldn't receive a suitable education. So we currently commission alternative provision through our dynamic purchasing system, however that system doesn't allow us some of the flexibility we will require. So the recommendation from officers at the previous Cabinet meeting in October was to discuss an open framework which has now been approved by Cabinet. Thank you.
Councillor Alan White.
Thank you Mr Chairman, councillor Price has dealt well with the question as put but I just wanted to rise to join councillor Yates in I suppose the condemnation of what went on but also just to emphasise the point about the fact that we do have those inspections for elective home educated children and the lists of vulnerable children maintained through councillor Sutton's portfolio to make sure we're on top of that. It is, these cases are always tremendously difficult, it is a sad fact that all of us can recite a roll call of children who tragically died at the hands of parents and carers who should have been charged with ensuring their very best outcomes in life and instead of which chose to take their life and often in an extremely cruel way. Names that spring to mind include Victoria Colombea, Baby P and others who I could list. list ad infinitum, sadly. We will always, in this county, do our level best to ensure that these sort of cases never arise. But, but you cannot underestimate the malevolence of some individuals and the spite they hold towards their very own children, and therefore we cannot give guarantees. All we can do is try our best, and we will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor White, and I'm sure we all share those thoughts. Moving on to item five on the lead statement, which is the Integrated Performance Report for Quarter Two. I have no speakers. Councillor Parry, do you want to come in? No, we'll move on quickly then. Moving on to item six, which is the Nexus Care for the Governance and Annual Report of '23 and '24. Councillor Mark Winnington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The report in front of you doesn't actually sort of give a flavour of the true depth of service that Nexus Cares gives to society, particularly to our most vulnerable. Just very quickly, Nexus Cares was born of Nexus Trading Services, and I'm sure many people wouldn't know that. Nexus Trading Services was set up by myself and John Tradewell to be an arms-length trading company, and it morphed into Nexus Cares. And Nexus Cares, one of the main reasons for having it as a county council as an arm length, is that if there's a problem with a care provider, Nexus Cares will, wherever possible, either step in or help fill that gap. This report is really around the governance and directors and their responsibilities. There's been a swap around of directors, and I'd like to sort of mention the fact that, welcome to Mike Sutherland for coming on to Nexus Cares as a non-executive director. But more importantly, to thank Mark De Vil, who's an incredibly busy man, and he's stepping away from the director, non-executive director role. He's been brilliant over the years, incredibly supportive, always attended Zoom meetings, and I don't know how we'd have gone on without you, Mark, so thank you so much. Probably with equal amount of thanks, Richard Harling has, again, I don't think Nexus Cares would have progressed, has it had, without his drive and enthusiasm. And for many of us in the chamber, we've almost forgotten about it, but Nexus Cares had a really strong place to fill in terms of vaccines for the pandemic. If you mention pandemic now, it's sort of, oh, yeah, we remember the pandemic, but at the time, it was dire, and I'm sure people remember that. And Nexus Cares, I think they rolled out something like 80% of the vaccines. So I think we've got to thank Claire Hall, who's the CEO, Laura Latthorn, who's a deputy, and of course, all the staff on the ground who provide that service for us. We are lucky, as a county council, to have a service like this. It does make sure that we don't have any shocks when it comes to looking after our most vulnerable. My mother's in hospital at the moment, and I'm sure lots of you realise how important it is to look after our loved ones, and even more important, the people who haven't got anyone to help them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Purely to thank the staff of Nexus for the work that they do. For those people who might be aware, what often happens if a care home or a care provider is in trouble is that we only generally find out on a Friday, and that means we have to move very, very quickly to make sure there's a provision of care for those people that need it. And Nexus Care provides that for us really rapidly. It's a fantastically responsive service, and I pay tribute to the team who stepped forward on every occasion without fail to deliver that care. This really is about the governance, this item. We needed to make sure that the governance was appropriate, that there were no conflicts of interest, and the fact that councillor Winnington and Mike is able to step up has been absolutely fantastic, because without their oversight, then we wouldn't be as in touch as we currently are. So thank you very much indeed to the team. Thank you to our representatives on the board. And with that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven on the lead statement, which is the recommissioning of contract arrangements for children's community support. I have no speakers. Councillor Sutton, do you want to speak? Councillor White, no? Okay, moving on. Item eight, which is the Climate Change Annual Report and Climate Change Action Plan Update. Again, as of yet, I have no speaker, so, oh, I do. Councillor Samantha Thompson.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that, following on from our sequestration, Climate Change Working Group, we've now formed a working group for renewable energy, and we had our first meeting last week, which was very interesting. We got quite in depth with it, didn't we? So what we plan to do is start with the policy first and take it from there and work down. So that is our next planned move. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. I'm aware that these working groups on this are really successful, and I expect that one to be just as successful. Councillor Jean Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. Just on the last subject before we moved on pretty rapidly, what I consider is that the county council should have a cast-iron, rock-solid policy on where and how solar panels should be put on farmland. And I've got four applications at the minute in my division, big ones, I might add, big solar farm applications on prime agric-- well, B agricultural land. And I know it's an onus, because I had heard God rest his soul David a few weeks ago about this, where the NFU stood on it, but the problem is that I've got every sympathy with farmers, that they're struggling to make money, and if a developer comes along and says, we want to put a solar farm in, we're going to give you a thousand pounds per annum per acre, they're not going to turn it down, neither would I, neither would you. So we need some policy to tell people where we stand on this. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you. Just picking up on that point and following on from councillor Thompson's comments there is that one of the remits of the Climate Change Working Group is to look at engaging with the districts and boroughs and producing a LEAP, which is a local area energy plan, which actually would sort of encourage, shall we say, the most appropriate places where these developments need to happen and the support infrastructure. That wouldn't be a NIMBY's charter, because there is a recognition that we need to have them, but it would produce a degree of recognition on why and where and how and when, and also what the mitigation is as a consequence of those things in place. It's also opened up, and just broadening up on what was said previously, the opportunities that the county has to do what everybody thinks is obvious but doesn't quite produce the total power output required, and add us to utilise our estate for renewables, which wouldn't have the impacts, which you say. So I think everybody is very much aware of the broader issues, but also the need, as in food security, to secure energy, clean energy security going forward in the future.
Councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I support what councillor Francis is saying, certainly from his division. The aftermath is rolling into my division, and there's very, very concerned people. And a lot of those concerns are actually from farmers with that grade B, that actually still provide for us, it's just because it's not premium, it still adds service. So it seems to me we've really got to address it, making sure that we do put them where they can be, but not put them where they shouldn't be. So I do support that. Thank you.
Councillor Julia Jesel.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And as the councillor that put forward some years ago, the view and the process of the Climate Change Action Fund, I'm really delighted that it's still going from strength to strength, is supported by councillors and supported by their communities. A lot of the work that is done under Climate Change Action Fund is actually cutting back on waste, on how we've wasted energy. So it's about creating lighting systems, et cetera, et cetera, that reduce our usage, because at our current rate, we will be covering large amounts of our rural areas in solar farms, in wind farms. It's quite interesting how the Western nations are all going along the same route, but there isn't that, what I call, healthy debate, healthy challenge. Last week, I went to a lecture by Professor Kelly, who is a Cambridge University professor, about climate change and challenging some of the assumptions. Now, it was the Lichfield Science and Engineering Society, really good group, and a group of people who really want to challenge, whilst climate change is certainly with us. I think when you listen to people who go into the hard data, actually, we do need to challenge some of the routes that we're taking. If I can give as an example, electric vehicles, yes, they don't produce carbon monoxide, nitrous oxide, et cetera, et cetera, but their use of rare minerals from other parts of the world is absolutely catastrophic to some of those nations. And I think that we're getting a little bit blinkered, we've got our own problem, and let's admit, in the UK, we produce 1% of the world's pollutions. But I think we do need to look at some of the unintended consequences. We've now got a ridiculous situation in this country where we're killing our own motoring industry by actually fining companies for producing a product that people still want, and the only people who are going to benefit are perhaps the Chinese economy. So I think we do need to look at that broader picture, and I think that broader picture, there was one comment that Professor Kelly said, nations, when their populations become more wealthy, as a lot of the world has become, we are guilty of a profligate use of resources, whether those mineral resources, natural resources through land, power, everything, we tend to be extremely wasteful. And I think that comes to a point where we have to question this journey that we're on, led by champion Miliband, who I question some of his drives. But I think we need to, because we need to understand what are the unintended consequences, but I think in terms of pollution of our oceans with microplastics, we've got to cut down on waste. You go to Africa, and they, local African tribes, actually could teach us a hell of a lot about recycling. They don't waste anything, because they can't afford to. So I think our climate change and our action funds, actually, and it would fit in well with the circular economy that I know councillor Tagg is very much championing, that we actually ought to look at ourselves as a society and cut back on what we waste. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I was listening to Julia, yes, you're right. One of the things, somehow, scientific facts can be challenged, but social media is straight away true. Within the county at Kiel University, we've got a good example of how they've approached climate change. It's got, they put hydrogen into the gas system. It was one of the first steps up, but of course, people were frightened of going to the next step of a town and then putting hydrogen into the gas system as infrastructure that's already there, so you could put another fuel in it. But the social media lot talk about, oh, explosions and all sorts of things, you know, and Redcar just went bang, stopped it straight away. It's working up there. They've got solar panels close to the university, not miles away, relying on the infrastructure of the national grid to take the power around. And national grid have gone from going around the power stations and disseminating power to now trying to get it off here, there and everywhere, and the mad dash to heat pumps and everything else. It is net zero. And there are other things coming along, the talk about gun, foot, shoot, Mr. Miliband, the carbon adjustment levy. You don't know about that, do you? Do you? Anything that's imported, steel, aluminium, ceramics, fertiliser, will have a levy put on it in a couple of years' time. Hundred pounds a tonne on fertiliser. Have we got any steelworks in this country now? No. We've got one down in Port Talbot that's going to be electrified, and it will do scrap, and that's it. Ceramics, little bit in Stoke maybe, aluminium, there might be one up north somewhere. So we're going to put a levy on some basic ingredients that go into the manufacturing of this country. Inflation, that's what happens. Inflation. Climate change is not something to be frightened of. If it gets warmer, we might be able to grow the grapes that make the sultanas that go into the mince pies. Twice. And I'm doing well today. And the, and the, you know, there are different varieties of wheat and barley that grow in a warmer climate. So one of the daft things of the EU was farmers, we had to grow three crops. It didn't matter whether you could grow them or not, you had to grow three crops. Now you can grow what grows on your land. So the whole of my farm's in winter barley, so with a bit of luck, there should be some decent beer about next year. But the, you know, so there's different ways of approaching this, and I think we've just got to keep, don't get going down rabbit holes, because that's the thing to do. Trees are an 80-year investment. Carbon, doing carbon reduction, and I can see the house builders, developers buying farms, planting trees on them, saying, we've done a bit and walked away from it for 80 years. You've got to maintain those trees, you've got to thin them. 10 years, they're thinning, 30 years logs, 50, 80 years, you've got timber that you then start using into something else. And you're quite right, Julia, about some countries that better at reusing things. But I tell you what, in farming, it's happening now, and it will affect the industries that support farming. I was talking to somebody yesterday, and one of the big combine manufacturers, you know, those machines, half a million pounds a time, normally sell 30. They sold three this year. An 800,000-pound Case Quad Tractor, the guy was quoted the 800,000 pounds, and it was 100,000 pounds to put new tracks on and service the vehicle. Guess what he's doing? He's not buying a new machine. So you're going to find that these machines that are coming out of industry at 100,000, 150, 200,000 pounds a time, they're not going to be buying them, because they're going to keep the things that they've got going and reuse them. The youngsters, they've got millstones round their necks in payments, and as for PPP on cars, that's another millstone. And those are the things that are going to upset this country, and you're going to watch inflation come out of it with national insurance. There's a good programme about, there was made about 1998, about the winter of discontent in 78, 79. It's coming. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Jonathan Price.
Thank you very much, Chairman. It would be remiss of me if I didn't talk about some of the work that we're doing with our schools. So of course, this county council is committed to helping save energy and reducing our carbon emissions, and energy-saving features are incorporated into all of our building projects. Our carbon baseline, as you know, is 24,109 tonnes, and this figure would have been significantly higher if not for innovative solutions. We've already put in place to reduce our impact on the environment. A significant proportion of Staffordshire County Council's CO2 emissions are due to our building energy use, and 66% of our properties are assets to schools. The challenge is now to mitigate the remaining 24,109 tonnes of carbon emissions, and our school estate has a vital role to play in the meeting increasing our CO2 reduction targets. It's expected that schools will, of course, It's expected that schools will, of course, make a financial contribution from its devolved formula capital to any projects carried out that we do to try and achieve this. So if I can say a few words on some of the work that we're doing as well, please, so please bear with me. So building management systems have been around for over 50 years. Traditionally, a BMS is a computer-based control system employed in most commercial properties and public buildings and schools to manage our heating, ventilation, and of course, our air conditioning systems. A version of this system is utilised in most Staffordshire County Council properties. However, no longer fit for purpose, savings have been calculated on a site-by-site basis. Given current gas costs and with forecasts indicating they will remain at the elevated high levels that we've seen, including at our homes, of course. A typical return on investment for a primary school is around five to six years, with an equipment life span of about 10 to 15. Whilst recognising that schools' role in combining or combating climate change, we must understand that the FCA is provided primarily to fund maintenance programmes to keep our schools safe, warm and dry. We will continue to pursue external sources of funding from bodies such as the SALEX Finance so that we can take projects further than perhaps our FCA will allow. Where possible, of course, the Schools' Capital Programme makes funding available for programmes to replace inefficient heating systems, explore renewable systems, investigate the installation of renewable technologies, upgrade old pipework, of course, and we've seen the state of some of our schools in the past. Our Capital Schools Programme is fantastic. And we're really good at identifying the priorities that we need to work on. Of course, installing new LED lighting, prioritising methodology target schools where modernisation, plants or equipment provides best value return on its investment. It's also important to note that in addition to the targeted sustainable projects, many of our investments reduce the carbon impact with the schools becoming more energy efficient. And of course, our new schools and expansions need to comply with the amending building regs, focusing on, of course, carbon reduction of the primary heat source and effective ventilation systems. And we will continue to work on these things. You'll see the Capital Schools Programme paper will come out beginning of the next year. And in there, you will see individual targeted programmes per school across the county to support them to try and be as carbon neutral as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Price. councillor Alan Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Who knew this agenda item also included sultanas, but also tractors? I'm very grateful to councillor Price for illustrating the important work that's going on in schools. Actually, this agenda plays quite, the climate change annual report and everything that goes alongside it plays very strongly into three components, which I'm very interested in, which is productivity, efficiency and waste. Councillor Jessel referred to this during her speech about how this helps us focus on that efficiency. It helps us focus on the waste that goes on. And if we can reduce the waste, increase the efficiency, it will reduce the amount that we need, the amount of power that we need in order to drive our economy. But the power this economy needs in Staffordshire is a function of the growth in things like data farms, artificial intelligence and electric vehicles, just for three examples. Nearly all of us in this room have got smartphones. I've got about 1,300 photographs on my smartphone, which is stored somewhere on the cloud, which is in the data farm, which requires energy. We are all using a lot more energy, and we need to be making sure that we're reducing that and making our contribution to efficiency and productivity. This council has an incremental approach to this problem. It is not a big bang approach by any stretch of the imagination. I've spoken to other council leaders who've said, we're going for net zero by 2030. Well, good luck with that and good luck with affording to deliver that. What we have is an incremental approach. Each year, we take consistent steps towards the objective of net zero. And why do we do that? Because we want to be more efficient with the way we use power. We need to be more efficient with the way that we use power because the resources that are required to do so are absolutely stupendous. And some of the nonsense that is going on around the world on this agenda. I turn now to a page in the Times newspaper this morning and quote, "The Economy Minister and leader of Germany's Greens had the gall to suggest that factories start planning their production around the weather." That's because they want to move to wind farms and solar farms. Well, this is the sort of la-la land we start to inhabit in a world where people don't see the practicalities and the pragmatic solutions that are required to deliver efficiency and productivity in our economy through more efficient generation of power. We will not be gearing our production around the weather. We can't gear our production around the weather. What we've got to do is continue to maintain with this council a practical, pragmatic approach to this agenda, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Moving on to item, not moving on to item nine on the lead statement, which is the half-yearly Treasury Management Report for the period ended the 30th of September 2024. I have no speakers. I'm happy to move on unless you want to speak, councillor Parry. No, I'm happy to move on. Moving on to item 10 on the lead statement, she's the budget proposals. councillor Mike Southern.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. Very small paragraph. And I know we've got the budget coming up in a couple of months, and we're also awaiting the settlement. But what caught me on the few lines here is that we're on track to deliver a balanced budget for the next three years. An overwhelming statement to be able to make because I know many districts and boroughs are not in that position. So I think we've got to recognise how we operate as a council. And that's all, really, sometimes less is more. And we've got a very, very good position to go into the next budget period. So well done to the cabinet and well done to our offices.
Thank you. councillor Victoria Wilson.
Thank you, chairman. Good morning, everybody. I was going to say how lucky we are, how lucky we are that we have such a prudent and sensible council. But no, we're not lucky. This is through hard work. I have a brilliant portfolio which delivers things like the countryside estate, 18 million pounds being spent in Cannick Chase, Chase Water and the Staffordshire Way. Investment in libraries. We've done work in Codswell, in Newcastle. We've got a fantastic flagship library in Burton. We're going to be working on the Nicholson Institute in Leake in the coming months, as well as other areas, Wombourn, for example. That's not because of luck. That's because we've been very sensible. We've seen the difficulties that were ahead of us, and we've taken steps early. I'd like to give my thanks really to councillor Parry and to the people before him as well, who were so sensible and prudent in their finances, and long may that continue. And I look forward to being able to display things such as the archives and history centre here in Stafford. More things like that coming forward for the people of Staffordshire because this is a very safe and prudent and sensible council, and I'm really grateful for this budget. Thank you.
councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, chairman. I think the trick is that we stopped doing some things years ago that really didn't add anything to the mix. And we have a community impact assessment, which I can remember 12, 15 years ago, we had a hell of a job shoving it through the offices because they were into their various equalities and things like that. But one thing about a community impact assessment is it makes people, officers, think about what might happen and how you can mitigate it instead of having a knee-jerk reaction and saying, we can't do it. So it was a way of getting around it. I look around at the other councils that are getting section 114 notices out at the moment and seeing what the decisions that they're having to make. And I think we made those years ago. Some pretty poor buildings that they call youth clubs. The youth club is the young people, not the building, that might be used one night a week. You know, there's things like that. And there's other tricks that councils are getting, and I know the same parties as in Derbyshire. Mayfield residents are getting in touch with me because Derbyshire are talking about charging residents outside the county for taking waste to the household waste recycling centre. I wish they'd think about their residents coming and using our household waste recycling centres. Dovridge using Utoxeter, Swadon using Burton, because it works both ways. And in the end, the public, they don't see the difference between Staffordshire and Derbyshire. They just see a household waste recycling centre. I know we've got problems down in Wolverhampton with people coming out.
Mr. Atkins, I gave you lots of leniency on the last one when we talked about sultanas and tractors. But we are talking about, no, don't interrupt me, don't interrupt me, Mr. Atkins. And I always give you loads of leniency, and I have. And we've drifted on to waste recycling and all sorts of stuff, and we are talking about the budget, Mr. Atkins. I'm happy to let you come back in, but let's just not have too much drift, Mr. Atkins.
I'll come back in because however little they might save, it won't make a lot of difference to Derbyshire's budget.
But we're talking about Staffordshire's budget, Mr. Atkins.
It will make a difference to Staffordshire's budget if we started charging them.
Are we finished, Mr. Atkins? councillor Atkins, thank you so much. councillor Gillian Pardsey.
Chair, I am appalled at councillor Atkins' suggestion that getting rid of our youth clubs was a good financial decision.
I have, I have, members, I have no further speakers, councillor Parry or councillor Wood. Councillor Parry, do you want to come in? Thank you.
Because I think I'm the only one in this chair this morning who's not going to talk about a budget because this report is not about the budget. This report is about the strategy. The budget comes in the new year. We haven't finished the budget yet. We haven't even been told what our local government settlement's going to be. We won't know that probably till next week. So this is about the next five years and how this council funds the plan that we've agreed as a council, our corporate plan. We've agreed that and we want to deliver that. We're not going to deliver it all in one day. We're going to deliver it over four years, five years. So we need a funding plan to go with it. And we need to understand how that funding plan will stand up and tolerate the test of time. So this is about exploring what we know and trying to understand what we don't know. We do know quite a lot about the pressures that this council faces. We do know quite a lot about the risks which are in front of us. We do know something about the economics that we are, that is part of our operating environment. We do know something about the challenges ahead of us. So bringing that together allows us to put together a four-year, five-year, medium-term financial strategy. It's essential that we understand this because the budget is basically a slice of it. It's the first year of your MTFS. I think what we've managed to achieve, and this is a complicated and complex process, led by our excellent director of finance and his team and the corporate officer team and many officers around this council who bring together all of that information, all of that knowledge, all of that intel into that medium-term strategy and bring out of it something that we can have confidence in, that you can have confidence in and say, yes, as a plan, that feels right. Because it's just a plan, folks. It's a plan of a five years. We have to deliver it. We as a council have to deliver it. The opposition members have to deliver it because I know from time to time, you know, we get that, we get that cross-parted support on things which are important and which are necessary. And that's really important to us as well. So we have this, we have this, we have this five-year plan. What we now know is that the first three years of that plan are balanced, that we're not looking at deficit, we're not looking at deficit. And our ambition is, if we get a reasonable settlement, if we can put the numbers together, our ambition is to push it out to four years, which would be really, really good. And I don't think there are many councils, and I don't want to gloat over this, and I certainly don't want to point out them over there and them over there. That's not my job. My job is helping this council to deliver a balanced five-year MTFS. We're not far off that. But that doesn't mean we won't get scuppered along the line, along the way. That doesn't mean we won't see economic ups and downs. That doesn't mean we won't see conflicts somewhere in the world that affects inflation and oil prices. That doesn't mean government decide, actually, we're going to have, you know, we're going to change the way we fund things, we finance things. Because a lot of this is predicated on what we know now. But we do know that they're required, that we require, the sector requires change. The sector requires change in local government finance. We know that the government are thinking about, you know, devolution, local government reorganisation. We know that we need some system reform in adult social care. We know that we need some system reform in children's. We absolutely are totally desperate for some system reform and funding logic around SEND and SEND transport. So there are lots of areas where things could not happen the way we think they're going to happen. Our job is to be as sensible as possible. And I think what we've realised, I think what we've accepted is that we recognise risk early. We wrestle it to the ground and we try to manage it. We try to ameliorate it. We try to push that risk away, as it were, including things like those pressures that are upon our services, et cetera, in the council. Chair, thank you for your indulgence because I'm trying to speak up to the red light gently because it is Christmas and I promised myself a treat.
Members, I do genuinely feel slightly out of the loop here, but well done on doing that. Also, well done on delivering an excellent summary of that, councillor Parry. Moving on to item 11, Wally's Quarry. councillor Derek Cookfield.
Very interesting one, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe a word that they say. Right, they close it down. It wasn't so long ago they closed it down for a week. Next week, it was back open again. Now, they've turned around and said, we closed it down again. How long for? They've got, get certain restrictions to put in place. And when I read the small print, that worries me because I'm not very happy. And everybody within there, it's all jumping up and down, right, because they all think it's closed. It isn't closed, right? It might be temporary because they haven't made what I would call a proper decision. The decision is really half-hearted, right? And the campaign really still goes on. And when the residents realise of what's going on, then they'll know exactly what it's all about, right? I mean, we've got Newcastle Council, Staffordshire County Council, we've got all the people you can think of for impression on the environmental agency. Then all of a sudden, right, we gain agreement, right? But that agreement doesn't last five minutes because the people that you agree things with, right, you just move them on. I've dealt with them many people, you wouldn't believe it, the environmental agency, right? And somebody will come along and they'll say, right, we'll sort it all out for you. You haven't got a problem. I was talking to Sue Ward on the phone the other day. She was the manageress for the Hall of Staffordshire, right? She agreed, she stood at my house and agreed with every proposal that I put forward. What happened? Goes back and tells them, let's move her on, you know, but we can't have that, right? Because if we have that, we'll have to close it down. If we close it down, we might have to spend some of our own money. Or the councils might have to spend some money. So what happens? We're still in the same boat, really, as what we were. We haven't got no further, right? We're still fighting the problem. And when it's fought, if you do were to get them to close it, right, it can go on to 2040, right? Because it'll still, the smells still come out. We talked today about climate change. When we look at climate change, right, look at all the gases that are coming out of the landfill site, right? And it's all over the country, right? And they're frightened, really, to make that final decision because it just doesn't happen here in Silverhill, in Theselbury, in Pilkfield. It doesn't just happen there. It happens all over the country. And people really are waiting to see what happens with the Wally's Quarry, right? I'm waiting to see what happens. I'm waiting for somebody to turn around and make a decision and stand by that. I'm waiting for somebody to turn around and make a decision and stand by that decision, either leave it open or shut it down. And the residents, right? And I'm a big believer in people power. Some people don't like me for telling the truth, right? But the residents are saying, close it down. If we look across the whole of the borough, look at how many people have complained over and over again. Wasn't so long ago, King University, right? Students that come from abroad were turning around and saying they couldn't do their exams because of the stink. I mean, so drastically wrong somewhere along the line, right? People complaining, right? About sore throats, headaches and everything else that goes with it. What effect is it really having on our area? And nobody really wants to listen to the county council or Newcastle council or the residents. They think they all know better, right? Tell them to come and live here within the area of where I live and then turn around, right, and say it's all right. Because I'm telling you now, Mr Chairman, it isn't all right. It's way off. Just last week, since he put that closure notice, you know, it's stunk more in that last week, right? Than it's done in all the years it's been open. Absolutely terrible. It's like a vendetta, as though they wanted to get the residents within the area because the residents stood up against him, right? And I'm pleased that the county council and Newcastle council are supporting the residents, right? They need their support, right? They took to the county council, Newcastle council to keep putting the pressure on. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Cookfield, perfect timing. And I commend you on the work you've continually done with Wally's Quarry. councillor Graham Hutton.
Thank you, Chairman. Since the temporary closure notice has been served, I've had to report Wally's Quarry twice for five out of six smells. One was three miles away. To get a five out of sixes, bet you can't breathe. I was in my car, it was a five in my car, and I had to drive further away to be able to telephone the Environment Agency. Oh, by the way, it's a recycling company that answers the phone now, Essex Recycling and Waste Company. It's not the actual Environment Agency, does it? It's an absolute disgrace. And for people who live there, I can... It's impossible at times. They have to seal their windows with tape. They have to seal their doors before they go to bed. This is not right. The Environment Agency is an absolute disgrace. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Cookfield. councillor David Williams.
I just wanted to rise to pay tribute to, especially to councillor Cookfield, but also all of the local members who have been working so hard and for such a long time to be real advocates for those people who are suffering these problems. And I just wanted to say again, councillor Cookfield has been a stalwart here. He has voiced his opinions and he's got the backing of all of this council. And well done, Derek. Thank you.
councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, just like to support the comments which councillor Cookfield and councillor Hutton have just said. I drove to Madely on Sunday and drove past the entrance to Wally's Quarry to see what was... I couldn't believe the smell which was emanating considering it was supposed to be closed. I'm just wondering if we've been issued or we can push for a schedule of works or a schedule of actions with dated timelines on things which need to be done to ensure it is closed down in a proactive and proper manner and to get that fixed in stone so that it doesn't actually change. The other thing which shocked me is that the operator actually came out and put part of the blame on DIY projects during Covid, people using and chucking away, putting in skips, too much plasterboard. And it was the plasterboard which caused the problem, which caused me to stop and think because I do know, you know, when it comes to the county recycling transfer stations, we pride ourselves to have a fraction of 1% which actually goes to landfill because everything is sorted and arranged. And I do know that plasterboard is one of the things which is sorted and arranged. I'm just wondering with these commercial operators who tip outside the county, whether they're under the same sort of instructions or have the same controls about sorting and making sure, again, following on previous comments on the climate change part, whether they have an obligation to sort and recycle, if not reuse when it goes into skips and commercial waste. But it does seem a complete anomaly that we do all the work with all the waste which they do. We have commercial companies, industrial companies, don't do that. But I think the overriding thing is to give assurance to the local residents and the wider residents who visit in that area that there is actually a fixed plan, a thought-out plan, which will resolve the issue once and for all.
councillor Jeremy Pert.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to start off by associating with the comments from Mr David Williams because I think he hit the nail on the head. Speaking as the previous chair of the Health and Care Scrutiny Committee, it's been a longstanding concern of that committee and remains a concern with the excellent new chairman under Mr Richard Cox. From a long-term health impact, it's the length of time that this issue has been going on and the impact on not just physical health but mental health, particularly for those people, young people with lungs which are still developing through their young part of their lives and those people with breathing difficulties. It's not been helped by the failure of monitoring equipment. It's not been helped by the failure of regulators, particularly the Environment Agency in this case. And in answer to Mr Yates's point, it's the Environment Agency who is the regulator here and they need to step up to the plate in terms of that mitigation plan. But the Environment Agency and regulation have seemed impotent and completely powerless. And that is until the last month. And I welcome the activity from the new chief executive and the new regional director of the Environmental Agency in closing down Wally's Quarry. I was going to say congratulations. I actually don't think it's congratulations because this shouldn't have happened in the first place. Instead, it is probably a well-done to the county council and specifically Newcastle Borough Council for keeping... sorry, and local residents for keeping the pressure on for such a long period of time in a consistent way. But I also agree with councillor Cookfield. There is a need to move to the mitigation plan now and the focus of our activity should now be on mitigation because the residents can't be allowed to continue with the smell that has been affecting them for such a long period of time.
councillor John Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. It's already been said, but I totally agree with my fellow councillors about Derek. He's been a staunch campaigner for this and so have the Newcastle Borough Council, district council with Simon Tagg and my friend here, Mr Sweeney. The thing about this is I've got relatives who live in the area and particularly a nephew of mine who has always had problems with breathing and lungs and things. And for the last few years, he's had a terrible, terrible time with asthma and breathing difficulties, which the doctor has put down to the smells coming from Wally's Quarry. Not only that, that sometimes they have had to get in their little motorhome they've got and drive up to the Peak District to get some fresh air and get out the way of the thing. They can't even sit in their back garden. And they are two miles away from this thing, two miles as a crow flies on Prior Road in Newcastle. So it's a contentious issue that's affecting the whole of the district of Newcastle and it's an absolute disgrace. And the Environment Agency is another quango, like Off What and Off Gem and all the rest of them that come on the media and spout all the good-splibbing things that people want to hear and then do nothing about the problems. To be quite frank, the people who run these organisations, like the CEOs on £200 grand a year, they all want their sack and they want to sort the blinking thing out. This government that we've got today needs to get a grip with this. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Simon Tagg.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think really good news, notwithstanding what's been said across the chamber. I agree with everything that's been said, but good news that the Environment Agency have finally moved to a closure notice. We know now that the operator has appealed that, so there's a process to go through. I think for me, it's backing the EA as much as possible now, backing the Environment Agency in the action that they've finally taken. I think I'd appeal to the community to continue to report odours, as Derek has said, and we've all, all of us in Newcastle, smelt it as bad as it has been. But it's important that we continue to have that record of complaints and the monitoring equipment, of course, is spiking and all three of them are spiking now. So it's really key that we do that, the evidence going forward. But I think the community can, you know, sort of congratulate itself on the work that it's done over the last few years, backed by the Borough Council, backed by this county council. I'll pay tribute to the Health Scrutiny Committee under your chairmanship, councillor Pert, and under councillor Cox later as well. But that's been really important on really highlighting the health risks. Derek talked about those, others have talked about those. And, you know, more will come out about that, I believe, in the future years. But at the moment, we must make the closure notice stick. We must make sure that this site never opens again so there aren't lorries strungling around Newcastle streets, crumbling the roads, destroying the roads around the area and also causing traffic chaos in the mornings and throughout the day. We must also ensure that this company is held to account and that will be through the closure notice sticking and also the Environment Agency taking forward its investigations and its prosecutions that it's doing as well. I think also from the Borough Council's point of view, continuing with the legal action that they have instigated through the abatement notice, statutory nuisance as well. And we will be, can really assure the community that we will be keeping the foot on the gas on that. And I think it's really important for the next few months that the community focuses on ensuring that the EA wins this appeal, that this place remains closed. And of course, the EA have said already in their closure notice a number of works that need to take place to cap the site. And then we'll move on to full capping and then restoration of the site. And that's really going to be the thing, Mr Chairman, that removes the odours, stops the odours and then drawing that gas off and ensuring that that gas doesn't get into the community. So it's actually, it's used to produce energy. That will be the future of this site, capping and gas extraction. And this operator must get on and do that and I think focus on that. We have had some announcements from the operator over the last couple of days of works that are beginning to start on site, some clay that's been brought in, which will be used for capping, that is all good. I don't mind lorries going in there, bringing clay to cap the site. But that's a big difference from what we were having in the run-up to the closure, which was multiple lorries coming in with all the horrible waste that is then put into this dump and then is stinking to high heaven, which of course we've had for a number of years and really reached a crescendo in October and November with us having over 1,000 complaints in November alone. That's the highest November complaint since this really incident, major incident in Newcastle under Lyme, started with Wally's Quarry. So I would thank everybody in this chamber that's supported us so far. There's still a long way to go and we must make this closure notice stick.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Councillor Cookfield has become well-known as a campaigner on this issue. But those who know him well know he's not really a man who's just a campaigner. He's a man who wants results. And we have a step forward here towards achieving the results that you are seeking in partnership with Newcastle Underlime Borough Council and also Staffordshire County Council. I give you my reassurance, councillor Cookfield, and those affected by this, the smells emanating from this quarry, that we will continue to support your endeavour to get a result for your community which reduces or gets rid of, more accurately, the smell that's emanating from the site. councillor Tagg is quite right, we need to back the EA in securing this closure notice because there are legal processes we need to go through. It isn't an appropriate time to start changing personnel at the Environment Agency. It's a time to get behind the endeavour to get the site closed down and then capped off so that those residents who've been affected by this have a future with clean air and a future unencumbered by the smells that keep coming into their homes. I would just conclude by thanking you for your efforts. I know that for nearly four years on this authority, you've been relentless in your pursuit of this. Let's hope that this time we get the results that your communities... And don't forget, it is in councillor Tagg's division as well. So councillor Tagg's communities deserve and we get this site closed, capped off and a bright future for the residents in your area. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor White. Moving on to item 12, on the leading statement, which is fixing more roads. councillor Philly Putson.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It would be very remiss of me if I didn't get up and stand at the council meeting to talk about what I am very passionate about is my highways network in Utoxeter. Can I thank the highways team for the work they've done over the last few weeks? We've had bad weather, but things have still got done. And the shopping list that I've been giving to some residents is getting smaller, but I'm no doubt in the new year it'll go up again. They've done some fantastic work and I'd like to thank Sam Griffiths, who replaced Trevor last year. She's great, she goes around, she gets things done. She doesn't tell me what she thinks I want to hear. She tells me what we're going to get done and when and it's great. Unfortunately, I've got two high priority jobs that need help with councillor Deville and councillor Flunder. It's the bollard in the High Street, which I do have a solution for. I'm just waiting for Ritty Raisin to get back to me with the final plan of how much it's going to cost and when we're going to do it. The reason, you know, and I keep telling the residents, the reason for the delay in sorting that problem out is the fact that the Maltings precinct, which should have been purchased by ESBC, the sale has fallen through, which has now sort of not helped with the solution I wanted to do for the High Street. So I have a long-term, short-term policy to fix that, which is going to reinstate the bollard there. The only other thing is a two-word name, Mark, and you know what I'm going to say, Back Lane. Can I please get that done as soon as possible? I promised Thomas Lane School, three and a half years ago, we'd do it. We're getting, you know, time's running out for me now. So thank you and thank you to the highways team for all the work that they've done in the Utoxeter urban division.
Thank you councillor Putson. I have quite a full list of speakers on this, as always, yes. councillor Caroline Trobridge.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Good morning, everyone. An apology for speaking on potholes because, as you know, I absolutely refuse to talk in chambers about fixing more roads and potholes because it is such an emotive thing to speak about. But today I thought I must stand up and talk about fixing more roads. When you go around Stafford now, now some of the areas have been done and some of the areas cleaned. You go down the Wolverhampton Road, no potholes. You go down the Lichfield Road, well, half go down the Lichfield Road, where they're still working on doing the whole road. I mean, that's a huge, huge investment. You go down the Stafford Western Access Route, which is a new road under this administration, Gray Fryers, Chel Road, Queen's Way, you can go all the way round without potholes. So I thought I must stand up today and say to Mark Deville and his team, thank you for your investment in Stafford. Thank you for everything you're doing. I know I'm the world's worst. I can travel 20 miles around in a journey, not hit a pothole. The one pothole I hit on the next mile bugs the hell out of me and I will complain about it. I'm the world's worst. So I must say, thank you so, so much for all the investment in Stafford and for everything you and your team are doing.
councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, the work which the county teams have done, led by yourself, has been exemplary this year. It's the standard in Beadle, which was pottowally is so much better. And that's the only mention of me thing. What I do think, though, is that we need to invest in fixing the foundations and, to curry an affluence, and sorting out the drainage and the tree work. I mean, one thing which this weekend storm has shown is that some of the roads which have been repaired, the potholes which have been replaced, have actually been damaged, if not washed away in places by the delus which we've suffered because the drains haven't quite caught up with... because the drains haven't quite caught up with the work which has been done on the actual roads themselves and the potholes, and I think we need to sort of respecify and reimagine some of the drainage systems which we've got, we've got soakaways and medieval lanes and things which haven't really changed the topography and profile, and I think we need to invest and get those changed, I know it's not going to be a quick journey, but we really need to be concentrating those efforts on making sure that the roads don't get damaged in the first place, by nature, which is happening far, far too much at the moment, and I think we've seen as well, I mean, we are short of tree officers, we're short of tree officers in boroughs and districts, we're short of tree officers in the county, in the inspection, we've had an awful lot of trees which have come down, which we thought were safe, which I suppose in our side we thought, well, perhaps not, and, you know, perhaps we need to sort of be a little bit more strict in the way that we assess those, especially in light of what we've seen, we all have residents, I'm sure, in all our divisions, who will complain about the odd one or two trees, we don't get scores and scores of issues and complaints regarding trees, but we do have one or two complaints per localised area, and I think we need to pay a little bit more attention to perhaps that they're looking at these trees over a longer period of time, not just a quick five-minute inspection, and I do think we need to pay attention to those, and I do think some of those issues have actually disappeared over this last weekend, and closed, and caused some emergency action to take place, so again, what I like to stress is, as much as you're fixing the roads, let's fix the issues which caused the roads to need fixing in the first place, and one final appeal, is let's be a little bit stricter on riparian duties and responsibilities, I don't think we're as forceful as we could be, I don't think we chase landowners up as much as we could do, and that does cause issues, we all know that.
councillor David Williams.
Thank you Leader, first of all I wanted to say thank you to councillor Deville for getting the work done outside of Seddon Quarry, I know that we'd organised and arranged a £40,000 contribution from the quarry, and now that work has now been carried out, and it's for a really good standard, so thank you very much for that, I'm also aware that councillor Deville has made a quite courageous decision, because I know the leader wasn't too happy with councillors dictating where the pothole pro went, but I know you've made a thing to make sure that the pothole pro goes round to every single member's ward, and obviously be able to promote it with the press, but what I would like to know is that, what has there been now, the efficiency of doing that and moving it around so much, and what the extra costs are, because I know it's not an easy machine to do, thank you.
councillor Jill Hood.
I'd also like to give my thanks to Mark Deville and the entire highways team, you've already mentioned that Stone was hit particularly badly, which it was, unfortunately we had a pantomime in full swing at our brand-new theatre, we had two fire evacuations, and then a power cut, so the stewards certainly, and ushers certainly, had a huge learning curve, which, good job it's happened early on, I'd like to refer to the Coffeys Estate, which is in my division, we've had three houses which have been continually flooded since just after Covid, so probably about four years now, the county council, working with residents, have begun to put a cattle grid in, great common sense, so that when all the debris rushes down from the fields, where it does every time it rains heavily, we now have a storage for water, the water will be able to filter through into Scotchbrook, and to me that seems just the most amazing common sense solution, and hopefully it's going to work, Romfield Court in my division, they've come along at my request and fixed the potholes, but it just beggars belief that two huge potholes have been filled, and three or four little ones which are forming around them have not been touched, and it's a court of elderly people who love to watch the highways come out and do the potholes, and then of course I get numerous phone calls, we are an amazing community in Stone, we had two huge trees down blocking roads, and within a couple of hours, with highways and with our residents, the trees had been chopped up, and they were massive trees, and the wood moved away so that the road was reopened, my biggest concern at the moment is our High Street, we are continually, and I say we, the town council are continually paying out for brand-new bollards, and then we get these people who ignore the no-entry sign, and it is no entry into our High Street, they come round at ridiculous speeds, and one hit a bollard so hard that the car was actually embedded on the bollard, we are looking at automated number plate recognition, the town council is quite willing to put in a considerable amount of money, but I'm told by the highways department that this is not possible, because if we pursue it and we get it, that is going to cost the county council for every town and village etcetera to put in ANPR, but I'm hoping that Mr Deville will look at this, I've already spoken to highways, and we have, you're a regular visitor Mr Deville, to our High Street, we have a beautiful High Street, it's always packed with families, a large elderly population, mobility scooters in the High Street, and it just isn't safe, even when we have events going on in our High Street, people are trying to drive down the High Street, you wouldn't believe the chaos it causes, the county council has very kindly extended the opening and closing time of the High Street, so that traders can come in after half past four, when the schoolchildren have all gone, but it is only for traders loading, unloading, or carrying a considerable amount of money, it's not safe, something needs to be done about it immediately, and the solution will be ANPR, thank you Chairman.
councillor Mark Whineton.
Thank you Mr Chairman, just a quick one, obviously I'll be talking about the rural potholes a little bit, but we are a rural county, and we've got a big area of rural roads, councillor Yates said that there's a problem with trees falling, there's a problem with drains being blocked, there's also a problem with big tractors and lorries, and I accept that, but if we start cutting down all the trees and making every road a dual carriageway, we're going to lose the character of Staffordshire, just, I went yesterday and, not by appointment, I actually met a couple of our inspectors doing the roads in my area, down a little tiny rural road, and they were there diligently putting the white paint round, now I might have missed it and been a bit thick in the past, but I said to them, I said, why do you put the white paint on the road when it's raining, it's going to wash away, and he said, which is incredibly sensible, we take a picture, so that even if the white paint does go away, we've got a log of the pothole, and they come along and look at the picture when there was white paint there, so perhaps a good one when you get parish councils going, oh well they put the white paint on, then they leave it, they are aware of it, thank you for looking after our rural roads, thank you for looking after our urban roads, and David Williams was the same, brilliant service, but please, please don't take your foot off the gas, we need as many as possible done, and as the inspector said to me, we're now waiting for the frosts to come and pop all of our potholes out again, thank you.
Thank you councillor Whineton, I would remind members that I still have a number of speakers on this subject, councillor John Francis.
Thank you Chairman, just a quickie, I'm not going to go over what everybody's said, but I'd like to reiterate how great some of our teams are, the team that Richard Raisin with me, and Paul, and in particular Lisa Hall, has done an absolutely fantastic job to sort some serious issues out in my division, unfortunately Lisa's gone from Stone to Lichfield, and we want to back, but that ain't getting on, so I'd just like to thank the officers for all their indulgence, thank you Chairman.
councillor Sadezain.
Thank you Mr Chairman, I just would like to mention one issue regarding by the Staple Bridge, there is a roundabout there, and there are two massive potholes there, around 26,000 cars go past everywhere, so I would be grateful if you can kindly note this issue, and also hope to have a quick resolutions on this, on the other note, I always learn from our learned friend councillor Philip Atkins, who he once mentioned me, that you cannot make an omelette if you cannot crack an egg, we know what's going on in the Branston Bridge now, and all the disruptions going on, and the last time we mentioned to get a shuttle bus, and along with the councillor's concerns, and my fellow councillor officer as well, and I would like to thank on the record to the cabinet member and his team for listening to us, now every hour we got two buses running, so it has minimized their disruptions, thank you once again, and also, our campaign for roadside flooding is ongoing, and I wish to have your continued support on this, thank you Mr Chairman.
councillor Janet England.
Thank you, thank you Chair, I'd just like to say that, most of you know that I have a rural division, and they have in Orwas, particularly in Monday night at parish council meeting, they have lots of trees, and they love their field, their green fields and their trees, and they've come up with a solution to the trees and the leaves at this time of the year, and they've put forward in their agenda that night, adopt a drain, and that's exactly what they do, they adopt a drain, and they make sure it's clear, so that the water can run down it, and they take the leaves and put them in their return bins, there you are gentlemen, ladies, there's a solution for you.
Thank you councillor England, if I'd guessed a million times, I wouldn't have thought you'd be discussing adopt a drain, we now move into the cabinet member councillor Mark Deville.
Thank you, thank you Chairman, and very many thanks for the kind comments colleagues, particularly the comments around our excellent officers, and we will ensure Mr Ayers and chief exec, that these comments are passed on to the officers concerned, yeah, I think good progress has been made, much more to do Chairman, much, much more work to do, and I can assure all members that there's no complacency, no complacency whatsoever, we've got a tremendous amount of work still to do, Chairman, I well remember, a few years ago, I used to dream of Stoke City winning the European Champions League, now I dream of gullies being emptied, surface dressing, and potholes being filled, and I am really pleased to see that progress has been made right across the county, just a couple of facts, we've completed the repair of 27,495 potholes since April, so that's tremendous, I think even better, 52,509 gullies have been cleared, I think that's even more important, you know, particularly when we see the really serious flooding issues that we've seen around the county in the last couple of weeks, but they're only, they're only figures, they're only numbers, I think the most pleasing thing is that we get comments that we can see real activity across the county, we can see more work being done, and we can see work in our own individual areas, so yeah, good progress has been made, but more to do, I think local members, all local members, have played a tremendous part in where we are now, the improvement that we see, you know, through their local members' pothole fund, which has been used really, really well, local members' really proactive attention to their highways, because highways are important to everyone, aren't they, as councillor Trowbridge said, we all use our roads, they're really important to us, and they still fill up the biggest part of all of our mailboxes, so local members have also had a big part to play in the improvements that we've made, I think with regard to local members' input, thank you for your comments Mr Williams, I think with the JCB Pothole Pro, we found, and I think you found when you were in this position, that the best and most efficient use of the pothole pro is in larger areas, where we do large surface dressing, rather than bringing the machine, which is quite big, into an area to just repair individual potholes, what I think with regard to local members' involvement, I have, I think the benefit of moving the pothole pro around all areas, is that local members can use the machine in their own area, and working with our officers prioritise the activities of the pothole pro, Mr Yates makes an excellent point about forward planning, and I'm really delighted to see, I was talking to Mr Ayers and with the chief exec yesterday, about some forward planning with regard to highways, and I'm delighted to see that with regard to major project work, major schemes, we are working further ahead, we are planning ahead, and you're right Mr Yates, that's really, really important, so in other words, being more proactive and a bit less reactive, of course highways will always be a reactive service, but we are aiming to be more proactive, now what we need, what we need to really be able to plan ahead and be more proactive, is real surety and real certainty around future funding, now the government has announced £450 million additional money on repairing potholes across the UK for next year, that's warmly welcomed, we're just waiting for the details around that, to see how that will positively affect the Staffordshire, I think even more important, we're lobbying our Staffordshire MPs, and indeed the Department of Transport, on the funding that was promised by the previous government, following the cancellation of HS2 Phase 2B, that money colleagues, that money would be much better spent on roads and infrastructure right across the country, than spending that money on little more than a cosmetic and unsustainable project, and I sincerely hope that this government does, as the last government does, and kicks it well into touch, give us the money that was going to be wasted on that unsustainable project, and allow us to spend the money better on our own roads, because everyone uses the roads in Staffordshire, not everyone goes to Manchester and then catches the train to Euston, or Stoke to Euston, or Stafford to Euston, best use of money, and the best use of that money is in Staffordshire, on our infrastructure and on our roads.
councillor Allenwood.
councillor Deville was really on a roll there, wasn't he, and I didn't really want to interrupt his flow, but it was a point of clarification really, yes, the government has announced £500 million across the country, to Staffordshire that means £10 million, but let's just remind ourselves, the previous government had promised £472 million, so the equivalent that the entire country is getting now, was promised just for Staffordshire, so if our colleagues across the aisle could perhaps put some pressure on your MP colleagues to recreate the £472 million pot that we were promised for our highways, we can then indeed councillor Yates, reimagine drainage, because we'd have the money to do so.
Thank you, moving on to item 13 on the leading statement, which is the school attendance campaign, councillor Sadezain.
Thank you Mr Chairman, first of all, I'm sure the whole house will join me and convey our tribute to those tremendous teachers, because of their hard work it is possible, this is a remarkable achievement, and when you get the 62% improvement in the attendance, and also, Mr Chairman, can I just ask the cabinet member, is there any way we can find out the feedback from the students and the parents, there could be some outside factors which is stopping them to coming on time, or others, so through you, Mr Chairman, I'd like to urge the cabinet member to hear from the students and the parents to get the feedback, I know this opinion comes from the head teachers themselves, but we would like to know the main protagonist of this project, the students and their parents as well, thank you.
councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you Mr Chairman, I very much welcome the Little Heroes campaign, I'd be interested to know what actually appears in these packs, which are issued to presumably parents, and really to find out who actually creates these packs, and whether it is just a parents, and really to find out who actually creates these packs, and whether it is just a Staffordshire-wide campaign, or whether it's further afield throughout UK primary schools. Thank you.
Councillor Jonathan Price.
Thank you very much, Chairman. What a fantastic scheme we have here. This is a Staffordshire-bred campaign, which has been drafted by not only officers, but with the comms team and Cole Hobson's team as well, and they have done a phenomenal job. We talked about putting a potential scheming place, and we felt that the best form of scheme was to support pupils and their parents to get them into school, rather than using the stick approach, which I think the DFE had used in a previous campaign, which was clearly not going to be successful. We now have 260 primary schools who have engaged in this campaign, and I have had numerous feedback, not only from parents, but from heads as well, and from pupils too. So you talked about feedback from parents and particularly pupils. I went out and visited the Christchurch Primary School on Tuesday morning, where I not only met with some parents, but I met with some pupils as well, and I had a good chat with the head about the success of this scheme. They had a 92% attendance record within the school. Following the scheme's inception in September, are up to 96.2%. Some of the packs that you talk about as well, I actually have had some put out in the lobby outside. So you'll see the two superhero mascots, but there's also some paperwork there as well that you can go through. So those packs are for parents to help support their pupils, particularly if they're anxious to get them into school. But it's also about those pupils working with parents to address those attendance issues as well. And it was nice, I saw a child in the reception of St Leonard's School the other day, saying to their mum, look, we're running behind, I really need to get into my lesson, I want to make sure that I get my attendance award this week. So pupils are putting pressure on parents as well, which is quite nice to see. And we have seen a dramatic improvement. So I've had some feedback from a few schools. So Nebruck Primary School, we now have 100% attendance and have had done for the past three weeks. That was unheard of. St John's Evangelist Catholic Church last week, I heard a child remind her parents about being there on time every day whilst pointing to the Little Heroes banner that was out the front. St John's Evangelist Catholic Church, another one there, the children loved the Helpful Hero Booklets. Crackley Bank Primary School, the Helpful Hero Booklets have really helped children, they are really engaged with the mindfulness strategies that are contained within it. Woodcroft Academy, pupils in Year Three have found the Helpful Heroes book useful, staff now have the resource to use where children and families need them. And lastly, Springhead Primary, the Little Heroes campaign has really helped give school attendance a positive identity to work towards. And again, this is a Staffordshire scheme that we've rolled out. And I did want to pay tribute not only to the officers in the school attendance team, but also our comms officers. We won two awards Friday night, Best Behaviour Change Work, and we also won Best Creative Comms through this scheme, which of course, other authorities are looking at, to see as a fine example. We know how important it is to make sure that our children are in school, not just from the education aspect, but the fact that schools know their pupils, and it aids them to keep an eye on them as well. So I really, really welcome this. I also want to, as obviously we're approaching Christmas, thank all of our schools, and our parents, and particularly our pupils, for all the hard work that's gone into this, and for all the hard work that they do for not only our mainstream pupils, but our most vulnerable as well in the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Price. Moving on to item 14, the leading statement, which is entitled, Lambs Won't Be Silent, I Can't Help But Call Councillor Tina Clements.
Thank you, Chairman. Lambs Won't Be Silent, too right, we won't. As people will know, we played another Staffordshire team, Burton Albion, and so I just wanted to say congratulations to them for getting into the FA Cup second round, because to have two Staffordshire teams play each other as a friendly local, I think it was called. But it can only be one winner, and that winner was of course Tamworth FC. So I want to congratulate Bob Andrews, the coach, and the team, and let's just hope that Jasbeer Singh Hans keep out any balls, because as you know, we are hosting the mighty Tottenham Hotspurs on the 19th of January. And when you think that one player of Tottenham Hotspurs is worth more than the entire team, and all the staff at Tamworth, and the ground probably, so let's just hope that they come, they play, and there's no trouble, and come on the lambs.
Thank you, councillor Clements. I saw that early on, I couldn't work out what it was, but thank you. Councillor Alex Farrell.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Clements has taken the words out my mouth, but maybe she wasn't quite as harsh on the Burton fans in the room, maybe we should do a bit more gloating, Chairman. It was nail biting, it was to the very last minute. No, it wasn't a parish council by-election, it was Tamworth versus Burton. What's that? Oh, very good. Thanks, councillor Clements. And I want to add my congratulations to Tamworth FC, and hopefully we can spur them on to a victory against Tottenham Hotspur. And for those that want tickets, it's the hottest ticket in town, Chairman, but you can always watch it on ITV One. Thank you.
Thank you. That was exciting, fabulous. I have one more speaker left, a resident expert on football, who earlier on dreamed about Stoke City being in the Champions League. That might be slightly delusional, but I can't help but once again call councillor Mark de Ville.
Thank you, Chairman. We're all Tamworth supporters now, aren't we, of course? And the whole of Staffordshire is not only proud of Tamworth FC, but we're all rooting for them in their third round match. And when you think about it, Tottenham Hotspur visiting Tamworth, with the history of players like Jimmy Greaves, Dave Mackay, Harry Kane, Tottenham Hotspur can't be much better than that, can it? And I know they would be absolutely delighted with their third round draw. I guess the only disappointment, Chairman, is that they didn't draw Manchester City in the third round, because I think they'd stand a much better chance of going to the fourth round, had they done.
Thank you, members. Councillor de Ville, you took my line, councillor de Ville. That was mine. If you've only won one in 10, councillor de Ville, then it's worth a mention, isn't it? But from the chair, and the voice chair, the warmest congratulations to Tamworth. What a fabulous day it'll be playing Tottenham. And of course, it was a shame that they played another Staffordshire team, so sincere commiserations to Burton Albion. But moving on, and I think I'll only have one speaker on the last item, which is Christmas wishes, so I think I'll call councillor Alan White.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And it's my pleasure to wish you all, with the exception of councillor de Ville obviously, to wish you all a very merry Christmas, and hope you have a restful time. It always feels on the run-up to Christmas that the pace of life accelerates, 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 and then the culminating point is this meeting just before Christmas, and after which we can all relax and we can start to enjoy the holiday period, in whichever way you celebrate it. But we know that members of staff, and you, your work won't stop over the Christmas period. Someone will phone you about a drain that's blocked, someone will get in contact with you on Christmas Day, having had the benefit of a few glasses of wine to report a pothole at high volume. So I know that you never stop your work throughout the Christmas period, but I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of you, the councillors in this chamber, and the ones that can't make it today, for the hard work that you do throughout the year. It's really hard to describe the work of a councillor, it is relentless, you do have to keep going all the time, and often it's a little bit thankless. But to all of you, thank you for the work you do. To the officers of the council, and your teams, the thousands of people that work for us, many of whom will be working over the Christmas period, I thank them as well. There's so much that goes on in this authority that virtually nobody knows about. The hard work of the officers, doing things that are vital but unmentioned and unknown. But we're all grateful for their work, and to them, I hope they have the opportunity for a bit of a break, as I hope the senior officers, who's the officer on call on Christmas Day? Oh, that'll be councillor, Dr. Harling. So I hope you're able to enjoy it at least a little bit, Dr. Harling. But thanks to everybody, I hope you have a brilliant Christmas, and I'll see you refreshed in the new year.
Members, thank you so much for that. It doesn't end the meeting, we've got a little bit to go yet. We move, no, before we move on, that's the end of the leading statement, I move that the report be received, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item six on back today's main agenda, enabling remote attendance and proxy voting at local authority meetings. Councillor Alan White, will you move consideration of the report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move consideration of the report.
Councillor Philip White, will you second?
I will, thank you, Chair.
I have no speakers. Councillor White, do you want to come back?
Yes, Chair.
On to item seven, which is the appointment of independent members to the Audit and Standards Committee. Councillor Trowbridge, will you move consideration of the report, please?
I have no speakers, I'm moving on. Item eight, Report of the Chairman of the Staffordshire Police and Fire and Crime Panel. Councillor Peters, will you move consideration of the report, please?
I move consideration of the report, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, we have a little bit of a run here, I have no speakers on this item either, so I'm going to move on to item nine, which is questions. Members, the six questions and answers have been circulated to members and published on our website. In accordance with the usual procedure, the questions and answers will be taken as read. I will allow each question of five minutes in total to ask a supplementary question and to receive an answer. I would remind members that no debate is allowed. Councillor Yates to councillor Wilson, councillor Yates, do you have a supplementary question?
Not at this stage, no, thank you. I'll look forward to the reply, and then we'll tear that forward. Thank you.
Question two, councillor Charlotte Atkins to councillor Price.
Yeah, just in terms of my supplementary, just wanted to say that it's taken me several weeks just to get a response to my concerns about a pupil with SEND, who is not getting the support from his local school. His mother has been absolutely furious in terms of the lack of response from the school and the lack of commitment. And when I finally did get a response, it didn't fill me with any confidence that anything would change.
Councillor Atkins, he's sort of questioning, I know you have a bit of a run-up, but as long as we can come to a question and not a statement, councillor Atkins.
Why I'm very concerned about this.
Thank you.
So I'm asking the question, whether the County Council has any influence at all with the school when it comes to actually making sure that the money we give to schools to support SEND pupils is actually delivered in terms of real support to that pupil within their education, health and care plan.
Councillor Price.
Yeah, thank you for raising that concern. Obviously, I wouldn't discuss any particular individual case within this forum, but absolutely, if you get in touch with me either after this meeting or drop me an email, I will assure you I will look into that for you.
Councillor Padase to councillor Wilson, councillor Padase, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Chair. The New History Centre is indeed a wonderful way to view some of our past art collections. But our present and future artists need to know what the cabinet member will be doing to support, encourage and value their work apart from it being displayed in small library areas. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
The member has me...
Councillor Wilson, can you...
Sorry, apologies. Yeah, I'm so befuddled by the question, I didn't quite know where I was. I'd be happy to take the member up with that outside of this meeting.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Councillor Afshar to councillor de Ville. Councillor Afshar, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Chair, I've got a supplementary. Thank the cabinet member for the reply, and just supplementary, if you could provide me a breakdown of the £215k in overrun charges for the period of 22/24, specifically if you could, well, it'd be helpful to know which utility companies were involved and the category of roads affected. Thank you.
Councillor de Ville.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Afshar, for the question. Absolutely, we will, we'll provide the necessary breakdown to that £215,000. I think the question is extremely valid, there's nothing more frustrating other than seeing utility works carried out, completed, and then they leave the traffic lights there for days on end. So I get your frustrations, absolutely will get that additional information. If I may, Chairman, just a word to all councillors, use your network, your local network managers, because they are absolutely brilliant. I know the network manager in my area, in Newcastle, is Kelly White. She is brilliant, she moves and challenges utility companies in the way that we should do. I know that Emily Evans deals with the stone and part of Stafford area, so I do urge you, if you've got a problem with utility companies, which we all do, speak to your network, your local network manager, and they'll get on to the case immediately. Thanks for the question, councillor Afshar.
Moving on to question five, councillor Asain to councillor Perd. Councillor Asain, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank the cabinet member for the reply. I just would like to know, how does the Health and Senior Leadership Team monitor the whole process, especially ensuring the proper, you know, the new case management, and also the need of new care from the implementation side of it? Thank you.
Councillor Perd.
Thank you for the question, and thank you for the supplementary. There are a whole range of different statistics that we're monitoring on a regular basis, because there is an issue about flow through the system. And as a result, we have a well-developed set of processes to measure things like how long it takes us to get a placement through brokerage. You know, we also measure how long it takes for people to be discharged out of hospitals. So there's a lot of interconnecting, it's a bit like spaghetti in some ways, there's a lot of interconnecting elements and parts, and we are permanently monitoring on a regular, ongoing basis, those elements. Happy to have a conversation outside of this chamber, particularly if the member has got a specific concern that they would like to bring. I just want to just go slightly off topic and mention that, as members will be aware, the CQC have started to assess and inspect all adult social care providers, principally upper-tier authorities. You'll be aware that we have been given our letter of when they're coming in, and between now and the 3rd of February, a lot of our work will be on making sure that we can showcase the brilliant work that is done supporting some of our most vulnerable residents within Staffordshire County Council. And I'd just like to pay tribute to the work that the staff do on a regular basis, and also those who are supporting our residents, particularly during this time of the festive season. Thank you.
And the final question, question six, councillor Philip Atkins to councillor Alan White. Councillor Atkins, I presume you have a supplementary question?
Thank you for the reply. Thank you for the reply. The two other organisations that, besides the NFU, is the Country Land Owners and Businesses Association, and the Tenant Farmers Association, who both gave evidence yesterday to the EFRA Select Committee, of which one of our MPs, Josh Newbury, is a member. I'm certain that they will have told him, and the MPs will have listened, to the fact that the Treasury have got their figures wrong. There are 70% of farmers who will be affected by this, not just a mere 500 a year. And I'm grateful for the continuing support. There were about 350 tractors, 500 tractors turned up in Whitehall yesterday.
Mr. Atkins, I know you're going to continue trying to talk over me, Mr. Atkins, but I have to be fair to everybody, and I know it already feels like a statement, and... I have to be fair to everybody, and I know it already feels like a statement, and so I'll give you a minute to settle, but we really need a question. I know that, Miss Atkins, and I know her passion, and I genuinely know how important this is, but I still have to adhere to what the standing orders are, and there needs to be, there needs to be, there needs to be a question. Thank you, Mr. Hookfield, I've got it. Thank you.
I understand, Chairman. Will he include in his reply to the Prime Minister and Chancellor the fact that there are several other matters that are relating to the rural economy besides the family farm tax? And I'm grateful for his support.
So, Miss Atkins, was there a question there?
Yeah.
There was?
And can he ensure that we have Sultanas in Minnsley?
As far as I'm concerned, thank you, councillor Atkins. Councillor White believes there's a question there, so councillor White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I did discern the question, the answer to which is yes. But to the wider points that you were making on the run-up to the preamble to the question, and members on both sides are guilty of preamble to questions, you're quite right to expand the point about the Country Land Owners Association and the Tenant Farmers' Association. And of course, we shouldn't forget that many farmers are affected by the increase in employers' national insurance contributions, and it'll be a surprise to quite a few people in this side of the chamber that I make a point of reading the Guardian opinion pages every day, because it's all, it's my military background, it's important to know what the enemy are thinking. And councillor Atkins is quite, councillor Atkins is quite right, there is this sort of fixation on the fact there's only 500 people, 500 farmers are going to be affected by this inheritance tax change. That is not the case. There is far more people going to be affected by this, and it's absolutely right that councillor Atkins, along with councillor Whittington and councillor Heath in the farming community, keep pressing this issue to make sure that the farmers and farmland in this county and in the country more broadly is supported. Councillor Heath would say to me at this point, they're not making any more land, you know, and she's right. And the thing is, when we look at the pillars that support this county, one of them is agriculture, that's the reason why it's up there, and we need to do what we can to support our agricultural community. So I'm with you, councillor Atkins, in answer to your question, yes, and I'm glad you didn't mention Sultanas.
Thank you, members. That does conclude questions, we're moving on, we're doing really well for time. Item 10, members, item 10, members, thank you. Item 10, members, these petitions, I've been informed of one petition by councillor Julia Jessel. Before I call councillor Jessel, are there any more petitions? Councillor Julia Jessel.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, this is an e-petition from residents regarding the Branston Railway Bridge, as we all know, has suffered some structural distress and has been closed, and I know that significant efforts are being made to reopen it for a short period of time over the Christmas period. The petition says either immediately restore two-way traffic to the Branston Railway Bridge on the B5018 and implement other measures to stop heavy vehicles crossing, or explore options to permanently repair the bridge and restore two-way traffic without delay, without entertaining any temporary solutions which only allow for one-way traffic. I fully understand, appreciate and can relate to the frustration of local residents. The County Council has done everything it can in terms of erecting signs to tell HGVs there's no way through, and there has been a terrible exhibition of appalling driving of HGV drivers ignoring all the signs and literally bashing their way through the concrete barriers. There's also been tailgating going on, I've stood there and had abuse hurled at me, to the point that people seem to think the County Council have closed the bridge deliberately. It's a Machiavellian trick. So I submit this petition, but I do understand the practicalities of where we are and what we need to do. And I know the County Council, the Cabinet member, is working with a local MP to try and secure funding for what will be a very expensive project to replace the bridge. Can I be a little bit cheeky, Chairman? One of the things I'd like to do is when we know what the interim measure would be, I'm being very cheeky, do you want me to sit down?
No, that's fine, you have a second, conclude, please.
When we know the technical details of the interim measure, this is the decking over the top, if we could have a public exhibition in the local area in Branston, so people can actually talk to the engineers and actually understand the real problems, logistical engineering problems that there are with this bridge, those who know the area recognise there's no spare room, getting even big cranes in to lift the decking will be a major problem. And the other thing is, and I hope my fellow Burton County councillors agree with me, the impact of this bridge closure and single lane running is the impact on the traffic and hold-ups in Burton is absolutely dire. It backs up to the A38 interchange, it causes significant problems along Parkway and the Wellington Road and throughout Burton. If, because this isn't going to be a short-term fix, if we could have an urgent review of the traffic management and perhaps some of the timings of the traffic lights in Burton, I'm sure all the residents would appreciate any efforts we could make to ameliorate some of those problems. I do thank you for your forbearance, and if I can...
Thank you, councillor Jessel, it appears to be quite important to the residents in that area, so thank you. Thank you, members. Item 11 on today's agenda is exclusions of the public, I'm delighted to say there are no exclusions of the public, but from this part of the chamber, from the vice-chairman and I, can I wish you all an absolutely fabulous Christmas? May you have a great time with all your families or whatever you choose to do, whether it's the, are you walking up a mountain, councillor White, or are you, no?
That's later on in the year.
But seriously, have a great time, I genuinely look forward to seeing you all again in January, safe and sound. And one small reminder from the officers, would you all please remember to pick your Christmas cards up from the inboxes? But thank you, and look forward to seeing you all soon. Thank you, bye.